The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners and businesses just like you. Michelle Parnell has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their whole buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grove. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard to find small batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gendier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@iliadgrow.com. Larissy and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest own Brian Larissy specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review and file. For a free quote, visit LarissyCPA.com now. That's L A R I S E Y C P A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest, near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services, plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. A relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at 224-768-8028. Or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd just like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Otto, John C., Helen, Eric and J M.
I've got the joy, joy.
Good morning.
Down in my heart, down in my heart, down in my heart.
Come on here. Now I think I've got you.
You miss me singing.
Oh, no, I didn't. Nobody's missing you singing.
I haven't slept till, since Tuesday.
Good grief. Everybody stayed up late. It's like everybody's dragging around. I heard that people were walking downtown Chicago all morbid and sad. People on the city trains were.
I just, I've been, I've been driving around with my pickup truck with the back open catching all, all the liberal tears.
Like I've always said, Donald Trump is not the second coming of Hitler, nor is he the second coming of Jesus.
Said like somebody who didn't really say anything.
I mean.
Are you the Kamala word salad? Did you graduate from her school?
I couldn't.
From the red?
I couldn't be his word salad as her.
I think you could, I think you could. Why are we doing a second podcast?
Well, we got some information here about somebody that we've talked about on previous podcasts over the years. Breaking news, I am hearing, we are hearing.
Heard.
Heard. That there is someone trying to take on Lori Fitzgerald and the rest of the school board slate. And I think it's someone that people need to know about.
Uh, is this someone have anything to do with the L four two QB Z group?
No, I would assume he does, cause it's Phil Aruka.
Oh.
Yeah.
Arnold, the liberal.
Maybe you could pull out the tape where he endorses Randy Tack.
Yeah. So Randy's, you know, an accomplished businessman, devoted father, husband. And I think his approach to handling difficult decisions is going to be a net benefit for the city of Lake Forest. And, you know, he's just a really solid guy.
And then like three weeks later writes a letter to the editor endorsing Prue Beidler. Now you want to talk about word salad and flip flops. There is, he, he makes Kamala look like Kamala, excuse me, I got some grief for that the other day. Uh, it's Kamala. It's not Kamala, it's Kamala.
Hey, don't take any grief from these tools. Speaking of tools.
Hey, look, I want to say somebody's name the way they should, the way they want it said, but that's. All right. He makes her, he makes her look consistent. Let's put it that way. If you thought Kamala Harris was inconsistent, Phil Aruka, whoa.
Is he one of?
He's for Randy Tack before he was against, you remember John Kerry back in the day? I was for the $87 billion before I was against it. That's, that's Phil Aruka.
Too, too inside baseball. So Aruka, did he spend money with Kamala?
I, no, I didn't look that up. I, I should have looked that up, but we can look it up here. I know he spent money on Eric Reinhart.
Are you kidding me?
And now Mr. Reinhart won reelection, unfortunately, but he didn't do very well here in Lake Forest. So again, you know, if we're talking about being in touch with Lake Forest.
So Aruka's a cop hater. Allegedly.
Said when you're, like I said about other people, uh, like a former mayoral candidate. If you keep writing checks to, um, to people like Eric Reinhart and Kim Fox, you might as well just point a middle finger right up at the, our Lake Forest police officers. Because I guarantee you, not a single police officer that lives in Lake County voted for Eric Reinhart. And I'm willing to bet that. Other than maybe, maybe, maybe Sheriff Idleberg, because he's a Democrat elected sheriff and he has to do that. But, um.
I feel like I know what you're talking about.
Best of them.
Should, uh, Aruka come on the show?
He should explain himself. If he want, if, if he's truly going to run, uh, for school board and he's supposedly out circulating petitions. First of all, he should explain, why didn't he go, did he go through the caucus process? I, you know, I mean, is this?
He got kicked out of the caucus.
That's true, he did.
Like me.
So you two have something in common there though, you can bond over that. Um, but.
Yeah, but he, he was, he bad juju. Why did he get kicked out? He got voted out because.
Cause he endorsed the candidate running against the caucus who, who, who slate, who screamed before the caucus three times and said she wouldn't run against the caucus and then ran against the caucus and cost the caucus $200,000.
Didn't he, he and his wife host Prue and?
Yeah, I think he had something at his house for Prue.
Okay.
Well, now you go on here, I didn't even think to look up his other donations.
Why don't you do that? I'm going to talk.
While we're, um, you can play the Jeopardy music or something, I don't know, but.
You can talk inside your head as you're thinking.
I do that a lot.
Yes, you do. Kamala Harris spent one billion, that's with a capital B and is in 20 million in debt.
It's like the country.
Bill.
It's like the state of Illinois.
Is your money well spent? Of which I guess I just donated, I don't know, four or five $47 donation to Donald Trump, because I want to get those cool black hats. Dark MAGA.
Dark MAGA? I didn't see that.
Yeah, Elon, when he went on stage, he, oh man, he, the liberals.
Yeah, dude, it's on the real computer here, cause like.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So it looks like, you know, you know how this works when you go on.
No, absolutely. So, but the, the dark MAGA hats, very cool. Elon, he started it and I don't know, he put some Latin up on this, saying, he says, we will take over. And of course he's just baiting.
I, you know, like I said, I hope.
You don't, you don't need to comment, keep working.
You know Trump's new chief of staff, the first female? Do you know, do you know who her father was?
Uh, yes, um, uh, Pat Summerall.
Pat Summerall, right?
Yeah.
I didn't know that till this week.
You'd be surprised what I know that I don't care that much about, but it is the first female chief of staff, isn't it?
Yes, first, um, yeah, I, I'm told.
That's not, what's misogyny mean?
I'm told she's the one that kept, uh, the campaign really tight and, and disciplined as much as you can discipline Donald Trump.
Yeah.
He, she, uh, she, she kept the trains running on time and that campaign is what I've heard from a couple of folks. So, um, hopefully she does the same thing at the White House. Um, hopefully they fall out like all the other chiefs of staff. Uh, let's hear.
But the way the popular vote's coming in, I mean, it is red everywhere. That means.
No, I think he did win, you know, I said the other day, I let wait for.
You keep talking, you're supposed to be working.
What?
Keep passing your word salad and find the numbers and I'll, and I will, I will.
Rather have some potato salad, but that's just my taste buds.
But, uh, so Aruka guy wants to get into school board and there's just been a pretty much a, I don't know if mandate is the right word, but people have had enough of this weirdo crap of, you know, gender suppress puberty block. I don't know, it's just stuff I, I can't even comprehend.
Right, I'm on the state side, so this won't tell you what he's given to, um, federal, I'll look that up next. But, uh, state, he gave money to Reinhart, um, gave money to the caucus.
Yeah, how much?
On January 21st, he gave $154.25.
Cause they all did the same thing, I believe. That's what they did, way to go.
He gave some money previous years, but I mean, not, he gets, he, he, he does find the tape of him. Uh, don't, you have it somewhere, right? The video of him endorsing Tack? Okay, so that's, that's pretty much.
Hey, hey, just go, hey, everybody that's wa, watching or listening, just go to YouTube and punch in Phil Aruka and look at the first video that pops up, that's all.
There you go. Um, he gave $257 to personal PAC, which is the.
What the hell is that?
It's, uh, the, um, uh, you know, pro-choice on abortion issue PAC. But my beef with personal, I'm pro-choice, I've said that many times on this show. My beef with personal PAC is they don't give money to pro-choice Republicans. They didn't give any money to Judy Bartapinca or, or Mark Kirk or Bob Dole, Bruce Rauner, all the, there's a bunch of pro-choice Republicans over the years and they don't support them, they only support pro-choice Democrat. So.
But am I, unless Phil comes on the show, which he won't, prove me wrong, Philip. But if he's giving money to those people and he's, he, he, he's coming across as a liberal and the, the way the far left is going with all this gender stuff in the schools and the way Trump won the popular vote, I don't think he's in a good position.
Well, like I said, the whole, I mean, anybody that gives money to, um, Eric Reinhart is basically giving.
It's not just Eric Reinhart.
It'll figure to our apps.
It is, you know, the sky is blue, no, it's not. He's part of those people who used to have 50 people on their website. Now they got, I think, five and Lake Forest is that, it's, it's a moderate place. Uh, you know what, common sense, Lake Forest is filled with less, less toolish people than other places like Highland Park. Highland Park.
The People's Republic of Highland Park?
Be careful when you go to Madame, to Zoos or whatever that place is, uh.
I like Billy Corrigan, actually he's a libertarian.
No, but, uh, somebody crashed through the place.
Yeah, I saw that, I hope, hope everyone's okay. I like Billy Corrigan, I know, I like his music, but he's also, he's no, um, he's not your typical Highland Parker. I think he's more of a liberal.
In the wrestling, I, no, I get it. I, I've had the pleasure of meeting him back in the day and we had some issues, but, um.
We had some issues? This FEC site is all.
Really? The Fed's got it all messed up?
Yeah, Trump's going to fix that. Um, cause it's giving me names that are not even close to Aruka. What's going on here?
I don't even think they want to claim, maybe they gave us money back, say, nah, dude.
I got Lake Forest.
Well, we can, we can look at that later, so.
I'll have to look, I, I apologize, Pete, I, I just, um.
I, I was.
Bring my A game for Aruka.
Appreciating the moment.
Trust me, if he files, I will bring my A game. Um, but yeah, I obviously, you know, here's how this works with the school board election. So you don't, there's a group of candidates and I can't remember how many seats are up. But, you know, all the names just are listed on the ballot and, and unlike the, the mayoral and the aldermanic stuff, it just lists names, it doesn't say, even though they've been slated by the caucus, it doesn't say caucus because school board elections are truly nonpartisan, supposedly though.
Everything's partisan, dude.
Yeah, you're right, every, we've seen in.
The only difference now is the pendulum's coming back.
The Democratic Party has gotten very, uh, into these nonpartisan elections, um, uh, the last few cycles. But, um, uh, so he'll, you know, I assume that the caucus slate will file first thing next week and they'll file together, so they'll probably be at the top of the ballot. And then you have, I think it's a week, um, I'm a little rusty on the dates here, but there's a certain filing period, usually a week or, or something like that. And then everybody else file, can file. And so people will, it'll say vote for three or four, whatever the number of seats are that up. So he, he's, he's obviously targeting Lori, but what he may end up doing is he may end up knocking off another one of the people, because I think a lot of people are going to come out for Lori.
No, what's going to happen is.
I like Lori personally, she's, and, and she's got a great, that's a great ballot name, Lori Fitzgerald. So, um, he may end up knocking off someone who's similar ideologically to him, because the caucus went out of their way this time to, um, have a mix, a diversity of opinion in this slate, um, so that they could, you know, um, not be labeled as a conservative party or a liberal party or anything like that, because that's not what the Lake Forest Caucus is all about. We've, we've talked about that before.
No, what's going to happen is these douchebags are going to cause us to spend more money on lawn signs, probably 20 grand, I'm guessing.
Well.
For somebody that's in a party yet.
Lawn signs, you get, you need a different vendor, because I could get a, I could get a lawn sign for every house in this city.
For me to change my opinion, the reason I have this opinion.
There would be other things too.
On Aruka.
There would be postcards, all that stuff, yeah.
The reason I have this opinion on Aruka is because in one breath, he says, hey, I love Randy Tack. In the next breath, he's condemning him and, uh, having Prue Beidler, uh, sipping Chardonnay at, at the house.
And I've always said, that's the kind of person you should never trust. Because, look, I mean, I have friends that are Democrats, but they're Democrats, right? They don't go back and forth, they don't, you know, oh, I'm a Republican, now I'm a Democrat, oh, no.
No, there's.
Know what I mean? He's not, he, he could easily turn on the people he's with now, is what I'm saying. He's, he's, you know what Phil Aruka's in it for?
Phil Aruka.
Right, so now again, Phil, I've never really talked to him, I, I think.
I have, you didn't miss much.
I saw him at one of those caucus vote.
You didn't see much.
And, you know, he's welcome to come on. I've always said, I'm always willing to listen, I'm always willing to hear.
Yeah, but you know what?
Yeah, we, we had Senator Garrett on and it was a very nice conversation.
Um, yeah, but there, there's a, I don't know what you qualify as common sense, but these, you have, uh, the far left geniuses and all this gender, especially with school boards. You do not mess with that stuff in the schools now. That's what the popular vote has told me is, hey, you know what? Immigration and quit messing with my kids. That's kind of what I got out of.
Look, and I, I, I will say this about, um, my, my own kids, my own child, because my other child didn't go to Lake Forest High School, but, um, my, our daughter is still there. And I don't think, having had a child, having had my kids at Glenbrook High School down in Glenview and then Lake Forest, um, Lake Forest is more, Glenbrook really shoved a lot of stuff down people's throats. You know, that's Glenview, Northbrook that, and I don't see that, we don't see that with Lake Forest like we did with Glenview. Because I, I do think Lake Forest is a more, um, conservative community than Glenview or Northbrook. Um, especially, you know, again, I, I don't think, this is not, you know, Southern Illinois or something where people are really right wing.
What's wrong with that?
Conservatives, but, um, I'm saying that I think Lake Forest, my experience, my kids' experience is they just come in and teach class, which is what you really should just, you know, they just do their job. You want, here's, you go to math class, you learn about math. You go to science class, you learn about science. You go to, you know, and, and I know in some of the social studies and other classes, the teachers have gone out of their way to have a diversity of opinion from kids. And that wasn't the case at, at some other schools in the North Shore. Um, I'm sure the People's Republic of Highland Park would be one of those.
Well, the thing we got to talk about is, um, we're, we are guessing he's going after Lori Fitzgerald. And that's for District 67, which is.
That's true.
The grammar school.
Seven, nine, grammar school.
Um, and I don't know where the weird, where are the tampons going to be in the men's room?
Dude, I don't.
What?
Well, I, dude, junior, I, okay, I know, and I'm not touching that one.
Why? Why aren't you touching it?
I don't know enough.
What do you don't know?
Here's my point.
Tampon, Joe?
It is more behind. Oh, here, hear me out, that's more of a high school thing than a.
Okay.
Thing, but, um, what is, here's my question. What is it that Phil Aruka finds wrong with the, um, running of schools that he feels the need to run against the caucus slate? I would like to hear him out on that.
Here, can I answer for Phil?
Does he have a problem with Matt Montgomery?
No, he has a, he's a problem that he got kicked out of the caucus, so we can't go through that prop.
So it's just Phil Aruka being out for Phil Aruka is what you're saying?
Yeah, he want, I don't know, he wants, uh, something on his resume, I guess, I don't know. A lot of these people.
Does he do again? Is he, he's not a lawyer, is he?
I have no idea. And, and you know what, I ain't looking, because I don't care. I know, here's what I do know. He, he wants to fill, hey, I, I did this, I did that, okay? And, and maybe it'll help him out later in life, but when it comes down to it, traitor, d-bag. D-bag.
Phil.
And, and, and I'll bet he wants to put tampons in the boys' washrooms in the, the grade schools, yeah.
Well, no, I, let him, I'd like to hear, if you're going to run against the established slate, you gotta give a reason to the community of why you're going to do it. Now, if you go on the sleepy podcast and, and, and do it there, where three people hear it, that's not really going to advance your campaign. I mean, this is the podcast, this is, this is probably the best audience to get to more people in Lake Forest than anything else around, right? I mean, I think.
Depends, depends on the topic, like this one.
This one will get five viewers.
I really care about Phil Aruka.
But I come up with a name for it, like, you know, maybe he doesn't do this, maybe he realizes this isn't a good idea. And he comes, because look, if, if the caucus has to spend 20,000, he's going to have to spend 20,000. Where's he going to get that from? Is, um, is, is he independently wealthy like, uh, the former mayoral candidate? Is the former mayoral candidate going to write him a check?
Prue will give him money.
Is Lee, oh, the, uh, the Palestinian loving Israeli hating, uh, 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 Reinhardt are going to give him money? Is Eric Reinhart going to give him money? Cause he thanks, as a thank.
For, uh. Phil, help me connect the dots, so people can understand why I'm saying these things about Phil Aruka. It starts with follow the money. I've seen where he put the money in.
Sure.
I see he's connected with that L four two B Q group who is lean lefts, leans far left and always opposes whatever's going on. So if you're far left, what I've seen from the, uh, the election on the popular vote is all this far left stuff, and I go to the tampons, you know, Tampon Tim and all that, Kamala picked him, right? Okay, so that, that was, that's what, that's what they're associated with. So till I hear him come on here and tell me different, that's what I think he's going to want to do to the schools in, in Lake Forest. In addition, it's going to cause more community angst, like we need more angst, more wasted money that mothers trust could use. Right, 20.
Bunch of charities could use, you know.
Any, pick a charity, okay?
No, you're right, you're right, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm connecting the dots there, so people say, well, why do you have that opinion? And then why I, I don't trust this guy as far as I can spit on him is what he did with Randy Tack in the caucus, while he's sipping champagne at a Ferrari dealership, uh, saying how much he likes Randy Tack. Then he goes on that liberal podcast, uh, website and says, you know, oh, I love Prue.
All right, I, I just pulled it up here, so Phil, um, and I assume his wife is Carrie Aruka. Yeah, he's gave the, um, they gave money to the Harris Victory Fund, which was not a victory. Uh, let's see.
Do they have to cover her debt too? Are they liable?
I, I think they, yeah, yeah, that's part of why, that's why they're still sending out fundraising emails like while people are voting, because it's like, yeah, we got debt to pay.
Come on California, 59 years, what the hell?
Kamala Harris, Act, a lot of stuff for Act Blue, they gave money to Joe Biden. Act Blue.
I bet go.
Um, and by the way, he lists his employer, Kemper Sports.
Oh, no.
That's what it says here on the FEC report.
This is public information, right?
Yeah, and his wife's employer is Capital One, yeah, this is right, FEC.gov, anybody can.
Okay, okay, great, so unless we hear from the guy, I got to connect the dots.
Capital, wife works for Capital One, what's in your wallet?
What's not in your wallet?
Win the ERA PAC, E R A, not era, um, like our friend Alderman Goshgarian, let's see what the win the ERA PAC is.
Can you give me a screenshot to put it up here? Is this bordering on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it, wait, hold on, is this bordering on like what Prue has been doing or these are Prue wannabes?
No, it's not Prue numbers by any stretch of the imagination.
So it's a lot of little things that.
I don't know what this, win the ERA PAC is, but all right, it's a total of, well, it doesn't total it. Um, it, these are small donations. Um, the biggest donation there was, uh, 350 for Biden. Uh, let's, hundred, hundred, yeah, that's, I mean, we're talking, I mean, probably, I would have to do the math, probably at most a thousand bucks, maybe 2,000 bucks. So again, you know.
Hold on, on a percentage of income versus like what Prue has spent, so maybe that's sofa change.
Now, he gave money in, in, okay, what's interesting is he gave money in 2020 listing Kemper Sports as his employer. He gave money in 2024 to Act Blue and he listed not employed as his employer.
Well, Kemper, they're the ones that run the beach and the golf course.
Yeah, I, well, maybe he's not there anymore, I don't know what, um. Somebody told me, like a golf, he was a golf instructor or something, or, I don't know, that's true.
What's his handicap? L four two B Q, that's a handicap.
More. Let's see, yeah, I mean, he has it, um, yeah, Phil.
You know what really hurts your, uh, your long stroke?
Mrs. Aruka is giving more.
Joe, well, I'd like to hear how much more, but you know what really hurts your long stroke? Those estrogen injections.
I just, like I said, I, let's hear him out, let's hear, Phil, come on the podcast, explain yourself. I'll be nice, Pete will be nice.
Uh, well, I'll be as nice as I was to, uh, Philippe and, uh.
Yeah, all right.
What's the other guy's name?
Which one? Um, Jeff?
That was probably the least nice I've ever been. So I would probably, Aruka, I'm just telling you, man, I'm going to have it out with you when I'll say my piece and then I'm, you know.
If he doesn't file, and if he doesn't file, let's all call it a day. I, but you need, I think it's 50 signatures to run for, minimum 50 signatures to run for scoreboard, so. Not an impossible task, but.
There used to be 50 on the, uh, L four two QB website.
But you know what happens, people go around and knock on doors, people don't know who's who and they're like, okay. Or they go to a train, you know, they go to a train station in the morning and people just, okay, you know, it just, I don't know, I think, because a lot of people take the attitude of, you know, everybody should be able to run, so they don't even, okay, I'll sign it. because a lot of people take the attitude of, you know, everybody should be able to run, so they don't even, okay, I'll sign it, whatever. So
If he can run, but everybody should know, based on my, here, my opinion, okay, my opinion, based on the money that he and his wife has spent and what they have done, and the association with L4TBQ, which is an opposition, to me, a left-wing, uh, group of people. And when you look at the popular vote and what I've heard, the reason why America didn't do Kamala is because people, one of the reasons she didn't win is because of all this weird stuff that they're doing in the schools, and I equate that to him.
If I show my screen here on Zoom with that, um, show on the podcast?
Yeah, here, let me just share, let me, uh, turn on the share screen, screen for you, Joe. Take the porn off.
You know, share. And then we'll go here to share. You'll see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so there it is. Um, and this is sorted by date, going back to 2019.
Like, how many?
I still have to look up Google, win the ERA pack, because I don't, Act Blue now, see, my beef with Act Blue, and there's probably one, there's probably an Act Red somewhere or something, some other, actually, it's called WinRed. Um, they are the processor for a lot of committees, you know, so that they could have online donations. But then it gets reported as Act Blue, but you don't really know who the candidate
Is that all of them?
Yeah, so like if I click on, it doesn't show, like, let me take one of these Act Blues. Okay, oh, now it goes in here. So this, okay, so 2019, he gave money to Pete for America, that's Pete Buttigieg?
Booty.
If you recall on his Facebook page, he has a picture campaigning for Mayor Pete when he was running for president.
No relation.
In 2020, so, uh, who's now the soon-to-be outgoing Secretary of Transit.
Oh, my God, what a job he did.
But then, let's see, who else, I mean, I bet you these 2019 ones were for, uh, uh, Amy for America, who's that? Oh, that was the Senator from Minnesota that ran briefly for president. Um, okay, win the ERA pack. Well, that's not gonna tell me anything. So, okay, let's see what he gave here, Act Blue. He, he's really, he's, he's really a big Pete fan, and then not Pete Jansons, unfortunately.
Look up Lori Fitzgerald.
You really want me to do that on here?
Why not?
Well, this is again, just federal, okay, he gave money to Mike Espy for Senate? That's the guy down in, um,
So this guy's inside baseball, just at a smaller scale.
Yeah.
She's, wait, Carrie, what has she got?
Harris Victory Fund, so that's
No, at the bottom, scroll down.
Wait, wait. Come on.
64, 64, 64, 60, what is all this 64?
I think sometimes they do these things where you give a certain amount for a certain campaign, and, and that was the number.
Okay, so there's 31, 31 donations. Okay.
These are, these are relatively small, these are not Prue numbers, but, um,
No, but it's a lot, it's a lot of occurrences, which means like, this is not just like one and done. Seriously, pull up Lori Fitzgerald. What's good for the goose, good for the gander.
So what we do, I'm giving away all my trade secrets here. All right, so then we go Fitzgerald. Uh, Fitzgerald is probably a more common name than Aruka. All right, let's do, uh,
It's Lori and Dell. I don't know if you can hear that, my wife is still singing from Tuesday.
What's she singing? Bad songs?
Joy, 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 joy down in my heart.
I'm can't wait for Saturday Night Live this week, what they do. Um,
Well, hot that workout, Kamala.
Federal, I just see a lot of Thomas. I don't know who To- Thomas is not our person.
Just go for L.
It's hard to search, that's it, yeah.
Okay.
So she's not given any federal donations, um, no. To Fed, this, again, this is just the FEC.
Whatever, we did it to
I'm gonna pull up, uh,
We did it to Phil and his wife, and we're doing it to Lori, just to show the same thing.
You got, do you get my new tab up?
Yeah.
Okay. All my secrets here. All right, contributions.
What secrets? We're here to teach.
This is all public information.
Yeah.
And, as I, as I said during the mayoral campaign last year, and when we posted the names of, uh, Reinhardt donors a few weeks ago, um, this is all public record online, and they have every right to give the, to donate to the candidates of their choice. But we have every right to publicly discuss it. That's what transparency is all about.
And to give our opinion based on if somebody's gonna be in charge of a board for your kids in grade school.
Thomas Fitzgerald, man, somebody should get ahold of him for some money. Um, gives a lot to a lot of people to run. But that's, that's not Lori. That's it, man. Lori's not giving anything.
Okay, so that's kind of what, uh,
Let me double-check this. I mean, I'm like a cheapskate.
I feel, well, I just bought those black hats and it was $47, and I didn't know that. Now I'm gonna show up as a, um, a Republican donor. Not that I need any more texts. Hey, pull that back up and let's see how our girl, uh, Prue did.
You want federal or, uh?
Yes. I'm impressed with this screen share, Joe. This could maybe
Do this all the time at work, don't you? Oh, okay.
I'm impressed that you're doing it.
Oh, I do this every day. Um, let's see, okay, now you got Frank. And that can't, wait, what? In 1978, the estate of Francis Beiler gave money to the Illinois Republican State Senate, that must be his dad. Burning in his grave.
What happened to you, Frank? What happened to you?
All right, you gotta go through a long, yeah, see that Frank Reagan Bush 84, that's gotta be the dad, unless they had a, okay, all right.
Yeah, who earned the money?
Prudence, here we go, Prudence. Uh, you know, like this is 1992, let's
Get it more recent, because we already flamed it.
1,000, look at this, I wanna see, can you see that bottom there? It's 1,140 entries. So let me refine the search to just 2,000, um, just to this year. What is today? Uh, 11, 8?
What do you think she donated today? Who's she gonna donate to now?
Dad, pay up, that didn't help.
Hey, uh, Joe, hey, Joe, moment of silence, please, peanut to squirrel. How about the ghost of
A squirrel would play a role in a presidential election.
Ran across the state.
I just figured out, by the way, why you were wearing your, um, your, uh, reflective jacket the other night at the, at the election party, Mary's unfortunately not victory party. Uh, but it's because of the garbage thing, right?
Where, where, there you go.
I just figured it out. Boy, talk about putting your foot in the mouth, Joe Biden. I wanna, see, I, this is what annoys me when it does
Actually, he did that on purpose and he's laughing his ass off.
You think he wanted?
Oh, hell, yeah, he did. Biden, you got, you got half your marbles up there. Thank you, brother.
Let's just do it this way.
Oh, my goodness.
This is what I, again, this is a government, maybe Elon can fix this database when he gets his hands on the federal government, uh, technology. Because this is like painful.
So is, is like Phil
1978 with, uh, oh, Strom Thurmond? His dad gave money to Strom Thurmond?
Well, his dad worked for the money. That's the whole problem. These people get the money, they didn't earn it. They do this stupid shit.
Thurmond? Do you remember Strom Thurmond was the Dixiecrat candidate for president in 1948 because Harry Truman had desegregated the military? Okay, here we go. Now we're into two, here we are, 220, here we are now.
Okay.
So
So she's doing the same thing as, uh, Phil.
Yeah.
50/50?
I know she, over the years, she's given a lot of money to John Tester, who was, who was until this week, the Democratic Senator from Montana, he lost. Um, Caston, Harris, AB PAC, Bob Casey, he, I think he lost Casey. Um,
So does Phil and his wife wanna be the new Prue and Frank?
They're not even close. Eric Sorensen won, Tammy Duckworth, Debbie, I assume that's Debbie Wasserman Schultz. So, I thought that said Soros PAC, but it's Somos PAC, whatever that is. She gives a lot of money to people outside of Illinois, but, you know, again, it's her prerogative.
Hey, who's getting 30 grand? So who's getting 30 grand?
Hey, she get, this was the Wisconsin Victory Fund for, um, uh, for Harris Walls, which obviously didn't work out. Um, because Trump won Wisconsin. He sure is, Vargas for Congress, Democratic Party of Illinois, formerly chaired by Mike Madigan. Uh, there you go, Bozinski, she won, that's a downstate Democratic Congressman, um, I don't even know who all these people are.
But the 30 grand
Eric Tran, I don't know who that is. I think that's, I think that's the guy in California that lost, actually.
Is that for Tran?
Her house, no, 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 don't do that, it's a, it's an
30 grand, 30, who are all these 30 grants? You keep scrolling, right there, stop moving.
Oh, this one.
All of them, look at them all.
Okay, that's Democratic Congressional Committee, that, that's to help elect Democrats to the House of Representatives.
All right.
And as of now, I don't know if the Republicans won that or not, so who knows where that, this is the Democratic National Committee. So again, that's, that's a back, that's a back way of giving money to Harris. Um, and trust me, the Republicans have backways too for money, so this isn't, uh, oh, she gave money to Comrade Jan Schakowsky down in the People's Republic of Evanston, um, who makes Brad Schneider look like a right-wing Republican. Um, let's see, DSCC, that's the Democratic Senate Committee for the US Senate, well, oops, that didn't work out. Um, I mean, these are the usual suspects, this, and Angie Craig is offhand. I don't see anything really, you know, Democrat, we, Amish for Arizona, that didn't work out.
Hey. Was that for Rick Lesser?
I, maybe there was a candidate named Amish or Amish, because I don't, I don't know what the
Ask Lesser about the Amish, the Jewish Amish in, uh, Arizona.
I'm sure we'll get, hey, Arizona went for, uh, Trump.
Of course they did.
It's amazing when you stop insulting John McCain, how you can
It's amazing when you're on a border and it's a, a style.
Just ditch that Carrie Lake, she's kind of annoying, but
All right, so, so anyways, here, let, let's get out of this, because I'm
I, uh, getting vertigo.
Okay, now, I have my opinion on Aruka. And the only way I can change my opinion if the guy comes on and says, A, I'm not running, okay? Then I got nothing to say.
Or he doesn't file, maybe this doesn't file.
He doesn't file, but if this is another one of them situations where I see these stupid signs up and the, you know, the finger pointing and this and that on Lori Fitzgerald, who I like a lot.
A lot of people do.
And what people don't realize is, and I'll say it again, she did what Phil is thinking about doing. She ran against the caucus. Why? Because she didn't know there was a caucus. She didn't.
Well, I would hope Phil can't use that excuse because he was on the caucus.
And then, so he
And he went to their fundraiser at the Ferrari dealership.
So, you know, I wanna nip things in the bud so we can get on to more productive things, but a very legitimate source has said that Phil wants to, uh, contest the Lori Fitzgerald or contest the school board for the grade school, right?
Like, yeah, he's free to do it and he's free to give money to
Oh, but no, I, that's
Free to tell the citizens of Lake Forest, who voted overwhelmingly against Eric Reinhardt, that, um, he gave money to cop-hating Eric Reinhardt. So being the pro-law enforcement vote then, Phil.
So what I'm saying, Joe, is we didn't just say, you know what? We're coming out here and we're gonna rag on Phil Aruka for no reason. Okay?
We just gave a whole half hour, 45 minutes of reasons.
Well, that's a lot of money, and the same reason why Prue is no good, because no good meaning agenda-wise. I, I, in grade schools, if you got somebody with an agenda, especially with the left-wing stuff, and now we just, I'm going back to Tampon Tim, I want you to understand is that was the, that's what they call the guy, right?
Maybe, I, I, that's the first I've heard it, but
You've never heard that before?
I just call him failed vice presidential candidate. You should, she should have picked, uh, the guy from Pennsylvania, the governor of Pennsylvania, Josh
He's Mr. Tinkler.
So you can't pick a Jew anymore because that'll piss off the, uh, uh, anti-Israel wing of the Democratic Party. Good Lord.
Joe, Tampon Tim is because he's the governor of Minnesota and he put tampons in the, in the boys' washrooms, okay? So that, okay.
I didn't notice. I, I haven't been in a washroom in Minnesota. I haven't been in Minnesota, so, in like 20 years.
God, leave, take a stand, son. So you got that, okay, you got that he was a Benedict Arnold, Arnold with the caucus? Because he can't go through the right process because he got kicked out because he, he played both sides, right? Am I fair in saying that? He played both sides. I don't trust him. I don't trust him. And we've heard enough where like if this person's gonna come up, nip it in the bud, or come on this show and say, hey, Pete, you're wrong, 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 wrong. We'll do it unedited, but he won't, because you know why? No nads.
Yeah, I mean, look at the, uh, you know, Trump did the Joe Rogan podcast. We're certainly not Joe Rogan here, but I think percentage of, of
It could be, I think we're the
The percentage of Lake Forest people that watch us, um, and percentage of, um, US voters that wa- that follow Tim, uh, Joe Rogan might be around, around the same percentages.
Well, that's why Kamala lost. She went on S.R. versus Rogan, and you know what? She couldn't fill up two hours or
I've said this many times, that the biggest, one of the, there were many reasons, uh, Prue Beiler lost, but one of the biggest ones is she wouldn't come on here with you. You gave her every opportunity, um, to come on here, clear the air about the Gerhards incident and other things. And she didn't do it, and Randy did come on, and
Susan Garrett came on. I got no beef with
After the election, she did, yeah, but
Well, I had a problem with her beforehand. Why? Because she wouldn't come on. Now she came on, I got no beef with Susan.
I mean, like I said
I'll have a glass of Chardonnay with her.
You have certainly not been a rubber stamp for the caucus over the years, um, and I think
It's all documented.
You, you could have easily stayed out of that mayoral election because of that. But because of what you saw at Gerhards and her, plus her refusal to come on here, you went all in for Randy.
Well, pardon the analogy, but I was a cherry on top of the cake when, uh, I saw what they were doing there.
Yeah, so
But, but no, but I wanna
We'll listen, we'll let you say whatever you want.
Or you know what? Hey, it's a non-issue, okay? My bad.
I don't know what the last day is for filing, uh, I'll find that out, um, but maybe he just doesn't file and this is all wrong. Maybe we got some bad information.
Change my opinion. It's a podcast of opinions, it's a podcast of, think of it a virtual public house where we hear things, credible sources, and the public needs to know this because school board's important. Your kids are important, and that's why the popular vote, I think Trump's up 3% on the popular.
And I would add, even if you don't have kids in school, you pay a lot of property taxes to the school district, so, um,
Well, this is 67, brother.
Trust me, there's a, there's a big chunk on your property taxes for 67.
I, I know, but not the 1,000 bucks that just got slammed on us from, uh, 115. Thanks, Matt. But no, people should know what's going on. These are the operators, these, uh, is Aruka an operator? I think he is, I think he is, uh,
Not a very smooth operator, that's for sure, but
Well, last thing I am is a smooth
Being for Randy one week, one day, and being for Prue the other is not very, and, and being on tape for Randy.
Whatever.
Maybe you didn't know, maybe that we Maybe you didn't know, maybe that was like, you know, one of those hostage videos where he's like, oh, I'm really, uh, Randy has done, would be a good choice and, uh.
Oh, he's sipping Chardonnay at a Ferrari dealership.
So he was, see, is what you were saying.
Now he sip Chardonnay in Prue's, uh, basement.
Over on, uh, Stonegate. And did they, I wonder if Prue and Frank got that big Harris wall sign down off the tree in front of their house that six people saw.
Oh, they did? I wish I would have seen that.
I, we talked about it on the podcast with, with Scoo.
We did? Okay.
And I sent you a picture of it. I texted you a photo of it.
I didn't connect that.
Yeah, they had a big Harris wall sign on, hanging on their tree. It was not stapled to the tree. At first I thought, oh my God, there's stapling signs to a tree, but it's hanging with a little rope on the tree. Uh, uh, one of her neighbors sent me a photo. I won't say which one, but I bet she knows. And, um, apparently there's a history there. And, but again, I still stand by my thesis that yard signs for presidential candidates, either side are completely useless, especially in a non-swing state, especially when you live on a block with like six houses that nobody, I mean, maybe if you live on Waukegan Road, maybe it might um, do something, but when you live in the middle of nowhere, which is because you want to, they've obviously bought that house because they wanted to live in the middle of nowhere, because that's why it's worth so much.
I'm treating.
How would you, they're putting up a everyone in the city knows who she's voting.
Till I, till I hear different, I, you got Prue and Frank, and now you got Phil and what's the lady's name? Perry?
Gary. And like, I don't want to, if she's not running, I don't want to bring her into it unless she's not politically.
She's not running either.
Politically active. She's right. But again, every donation that every person gives to a federal or state campaign is disclosed under law. It's transparent. Anyone can go on the internet and look that up.
So if you have a transcript.
We're not violating anyone's privacy. And again, I, I will stand by, they have a right to do this. It's the American way, just as I have a right to give money to the candidates of my choice. You have a right to give money to the candidates of your choice.
Forty-seven dollars, damn straight.
But then everyone else has a right to see it and discuss it.
Well, and everybody's entitled to their, to their opinion. I gave my opinion and the reasons why I feel that way and why I feel that the source is credible. And if this is going to come up, nip it in the bud, come on and say why we should, somebody should vote for a contested person on the school board after they've given all this money to the left. Lot, whatever the money is, I don't know what their income is, the, you know, there was unemployed in there. So that could be a good percentage of their money, right? So whatever, if it's that important to me, that's agenda and people need to know that agenda now. And that's why, that's why. And then we just had this Kamala stuff, tampon Tim and all that. I, till I hear differently, I don't want any of that stuff in my school. If he wasn't going to run for school board and contest it. Okay. All right.
So in my school, a victory flag for the scouts.
Libertyville, Libertyville.
Libertyville.
And, uh, some people get this out early to our Patreon people and you Patreon people that share it with people that didn't pony up. Come on, what the frig? Cut that crap out.
Um, and just, just, people were asking me, Lake Forest versus Libertyville. The game is Saturday afternoon and let me look up.
Oh, Saturday. That's right. So they.
On Saturday afternoon and it is, um, it is going to be at one o'clock in Libertyville. But that Liberty, Libertyville High School is not that far a drive from Lake Forest. So get in your car, get in your Tesla truck and, um, head on out to Libertyville High School, one o'clock. Get there a little early because it takes time to park over there. You won't get to hear the, the wonderful tones of Scoo Walker announcing the game.
He's sitting next to us.
You won't get any, any good duffers concessions like you do at the home games, but maybe they got some nice Cracker Jacks or something that they're considering.
Stream it, whatever, what?
Bring, or yeah, I, I assume Chiefs will stream it. So you could go to Chiefs and, and enjoy their wonderful food and beverage, but just come on, cheer on the scouts. Let's, let's do it.
Yeah, let's get out of.
These guys had a really good season. They've worked really hard. These are good kids and let's, let's cheer them on.
Coach Yatsi, nice year, buddy. Nice year. All right, uh, Joe, another, I can't believe we did two podcasts and I can't believe the second one is on this guy, Aruka, who I really don't want to talk about, except that it could be adversarial to.
This could be a complete overkill if he doesn't run, but whatever.
Close enough. That's what we're here for. Prove us wrong. Joe Weiss, go scouts.
Uh, go scouts.
Peace out. Go Trump.
Michelle Pardo has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at eight four seven five two eight eight seven two one, eight four seven five two eight eight seven two one. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich. They are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard to find small batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gangier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info at iliadgrow.com. Larice and Company CPAs founded in two thousand and ten by Lake Forest's own Brian Larice specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review and file. For a free quote, visit laricecpa.com now. That's L A R I S E Y C P A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community, the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at seven seven five North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services, plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. A relaxing and luxurious spa environment. You can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall wellbeing. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at two two four seven six eight eight zero two eight. Or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Otto, John C, Helen, Eric and JM.